All right, wrap that session there.
Good evening. I call to order the virtual study session of the Lakewood City Council on August 4th, 2025 at 7:02 PM. To connect with the council meeting online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any links to LakewoodSpeaks.org. That is our online forum for public comments and will be left to open through the evening tonight and until 10:00 AM tomorrow morning for any comments related to tonight's presentation. Will the clerk please kick us off by calling the roll?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Cruz I.
Here.
Cruz K.
Here.
Furman. Maybe he's not online yet. Councillor LeBure.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Mayak Carrero.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Charzai is absent, councillor Sinks.
Here.
And I'll try one more time to call councillor Furman, I'm not sure if he made it yet. Okay, maybe not, but Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. For tonight's presentation, I will actually hand the floor over to Maria DeAndrea, our Director of Public Works. Miss DeAndrea, I'll hand the floor over, do you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Good evening. As you may be aware, anytime anyone does anything to alter their property or to construct something new or to repair something, it typically involves a permit. And so, the work before you tonight, staff is here to discuss modifications to our permitting processes as well as the fees associated with issuing permits. Specifically, where we have looked at over the last two years is streamlining various processes for how you apply and receive permits as well as recouping fees in alignment with the cost for those services. And ultimately, our goal is to facilitate continued investment within the community. So, we're going to give you an overview of those. Keith Hensel, our City Engineer for Development Services is here tonight. I'll turn the presentation over to him and we'll go through these, this is informational only, and, but we do have time for questions and wrap up at the end, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, again, my name's Keith Hensel, I'm the City Engineer for Development Services and I'll go ahead and share my screen. And can everyone see that?
Yep, looks good, Keith.
Awesome, thank you. Just one moment. There we go. All right, thank you, as, as the director said, we've been working on this project for quite some time. We're excited to be before you this evening and present some new ideas and some things that we hope are going to help our, our program with permitting. So, we'll get started here. There we go. Little history as we get started. This slide shows kind of our recent history for adoption of new fees. You can see that we had the last big fee adjustments in 2014. We made some adjustments to flat fees in 2020 and we adjusted our contractor registration fees in 2021. The change in 2021 was mostly due to our switch over to the eTrakit system and had more to do with how the eTrakit system works than actually changing the fees. The underlying graph is the construction cost index from Mortenson Construction from 2025. And you can see that over the time period since we've last adjusted fees, there's been a pretty substantial increase in construction costs. Okay, our goals here, when we started this process, we kind of expected like the last processes to mostly focus on the actual cost that it takes for the city to put the fees together. Issuing permits, doing inspections, doing the paperwork at the end of, of the processes. After we got started though, it was quickly identified that there was a need and an opportunity to expand the scope of this study. Development Services actively seeks out ways to improve our customer service and we thought that this was a good opportunity to take a look at that permit system and see where we could improve things to improve the timing and the ease of using our permits. In addition, we wanted to address some of the shortfalls that we find in the current system. Okay, I'm going to start with our contractor registration fees. Certain, the, I'm sorry, the city currently has a registration process for, for contractors. Registration differences differs from the licensure with regards to the certification and requirements. We have rather moderate standards for contractors, they don't need to provide any type of education or other proof of passing any type of certifications. So, when we do a new registration for a contractor, we're mostly taking our time to set up records. We check insurance requirements if they are certain classes that may be working within the right of way. And we look for certain credentials for things like plumbers and electricians. We also verify their registration with state, but the initial registration process is, is not very arduous. In the renewal period, essentially, we take that information and we just go back through that and verify that. Now, one of the shortfalls that we find in our current system is that we currently charge $150 for a new registration and then we charge $400 for a renewal that lasts for three years. As I mentioned, almost all of the work that we do is within that first period. So, we believe that that additional cost in that renewal period should be reduced to something that's more in line with the actual time that we put into, to the process. The second issue that we wanted to address here, or the second shortfall we found in our system, is that even though we register contractors and everybody that works within the city has to have that registration, we do not have any type of a system that tracks the contractor performance. Or do we attempt to seek out those contractors who may be underqualified or otherwise not providing the service that we expect them to provide? So, we're going to propose that we change our registration period to one year. We're going to revise the cost of that initial registration to more correctly be in line with the cost that staff has in place. And then we would like to change the renewal time period to be an annual review. The reason that we would like to do an annual review is because we want to insert that level of quality that will come from checking those registrations annually. Specifically, we want to take a look at things like stop work orders and expired permits. Right now, the city does not have any regulations in place that allow us to charge a contractor when they have some sort of a stop work order. We also don't have any way to recoup costs from expired permits when we find those in the contractor's record. 2024, almost one-third of all building permits expired. The reason the permit expires is most likely because there was no final inspection or there was not a pass issued on the final inspection and the contractor let those registration, or I'm sorry, those inspections just expire. That's a serious issue for us because we are trying to uphold the, the standard and safety that comes from those inspections. So, we would like to take that one-year reregistration period and instead of just doing what we have been doing in the past, which is verifying, we also want to develop a system that allows us to keep track of the contractors, keep track of complaints that we receive against contractors. And then be able to issue some sort of penalties as, as necessary for those that fail to either close out their permits or those that receive stop work orders during the, the previous year. In addition to these items that we want to incorporate into that one-year annual recertification, if you will, is that all of the contractors that work within the right of way are required to carry insurance. We spend an enormous amount of time at the permit counter, working back and forth with insurance companies to get the correct language in the insurance documents. We have worked out with the City Attorney's Office that we must require now a contract with the contractors in order to be issued the correct type of insurance from their insurance companies. By going to a annual registration, this is going to allow us the opportunity to collect all of that insurance information at one time so that when they come in for permits, they're able to get those permits quickly and without all of the back and forth that we currently have now with insurance. Typically, a, a permit takes two or three days on the front end, most of that time is working back and forth with insurance and doing paperwork to get them caught up. So, the, the annual should improve that service and help us to get those permits issued quicker. Okay, grading and erosion control permits. Our grading and erosion control permits are very, very important. They are part of our MS4 program with the state. Annual reporting is required on all of those permits so that we can keep track of not only when they were done, but how they were done, all of the inspection reports. So, this is a very important part of Development Services and the Construction Inspection Division. Grading and erosion control permits are currently issued at the same time. However, both of those processes, the grading permit and the erosion control have different systems to calculate the fees. Every project that disturbs earth needs a grading permit and even small sites will include a plan that shows the erosion control. In addition, grading permits require collateral for erosion control. Collateral is determined from a cost estimate that is done back in the Engineering Division and the cost estimate is based on the erosion control measures that are required for the site. Currently, the code does not put any restrictions on, on the engineers to determine exactly how those costs are calculated, so the cost estimate is traditionally what we've done. Currently, no erosion fee is required when the disturbed area is less than an acre. In addition, the city does not require a fee when the disturbed area is larger than five acres. Grading fees are not currently required with a building permit. So, when we put all these different combinations together, it's confusing for contractors to understand what permit they need and what their fees are going to be on any particular project. Now, even though we do not charge fees on these permits, the city still has to review, inspect, track all grading and erosion control plans. On grading permits where there is collateral collected, we also have to make sure that we return that collateral at the end of the project, which takes some additional time from not only the engineering staff, the inspection staff, but also finance. It's common to calculate erosion control based on the area of disturbance. Other city criteria such as the drainage criteria refers to area thresholds for erosion control and water quality requirements. Grading fees are currently based on the number of cubic yards of earthwork that are in a project. This requires the permit texts and those that prepare the estimates to have a pretty extensive knowledge of the earthwork design. And once we get into construction, things often change as can the grading quantity. So, permit value that's issued at the beginning could then become different with changes out in the field. The chart that you see here at the bottom of the slide shows the number of permits that we issued, grading permits issued in 2024 and it divides those up between those that were issued with a building permit. In other words, there was no fee collected on that and the number that was issued as standalone permits. So, just a little over twice the permits that we issued, we received no, no fees for. If we take the, the fees that we anticipate charging, we see we've got a projected revenue that's significantly larger, but the fees don't go up very much for each individual permit. It's really just the combination of getting paid for the projects that we're not currently getting any fees for. Okay, so, what we'd like to do with the grading and erosion control fees is we would like to change the structure of those permits around so that we put those into four different categories. We'd like to put a category that takes care of residential lots, one that takes care of commercial properties and less than one acre, those that are one acre to 4.99 acres and those projects that exceed five acres in size. These thresholds are consistent with what we currently use for erosion control. So, what we're doing is we're just putting the grading and the erosion control together, making one fee for both. In addition, we would also like to pre-calculate, if you will, the recommended collateral. This will save us some time in the system, having to go through each individual erosion control plan and calculating that specific plan. This will help us with not only issuing those, it'll make these fees more consistent for the contractors, they'll be able to know exactly what their fees are going to be before they submit.
Recording in progress.
And we'll also be able to handle this a little bit better in our collateral return process. Okay, right-of-way permits. Right-of-way permit is required for all construction activity within the public right-of-way. We have basically two types of projects that we deal with. We have smaller projects that do not need a public improvement agreement. With this type of project, the applicant submits a permit application for the desired work through the eTrakit system. The application includes a table to be filled in showing the quantities of the public improvements to be constructed. Permit technician uses these quantities that are provided by the contractor to calculate the fees and the collateral required for the project. Every project like this or every permit like this has to be hand calculated by the permit counter. For projects that do not require a public, or that, I'm sorry, for projects that do require a public improvement agreement, the engineering department calculates that collateral. These are projects that are much bigger, they're often associated with larger site plans and bigger sections of roadwork. So, some of the shortfalls of this process are that many of the permits that we issue have fees in the $52 range, even though a, a single inspection costs a city about $93. When we look at right-of-way projects, we not only do an initial inspection of the work, but we also need to do a follow-up inspection. So, all right-of-ways work gets at least two inspections. In addition to that, we spend time returning collateral and if there are issues found during construction, that often adds as many as another two or three inspections. Seventy percent of the right-of-way permits issued in 2024 had fees less than $104. Sixty-six percent of, of the fees, I'm sorry, of the permits issued had fees less than $52. And we actually had 39% of our right-of-way permits issued in 2024 that had fees of less than $26. So, 70% of the right-of-way permits issued do not cover our cost to do, issue the permit, do our two inspections and return any collateral fees. In addition to the low fee issue, the system, the current system has a lot of opportunities for errors. Contractor supplied quantities are not always correct. We might think that they tend to under-report quantities to save on costs, but as we go back through permits and take a look at the information provided, we find many times that the contractors provide quantities that are too large. This happens because the sheet that they have to fill out, that they estimate their quantities from is very complex. The quantities or the units that they use do not always make sense for the type of things that they're constructing and many errors are found. We did a small audit of a number of projects that were done under the public improvement side. We found some contractors submitted public way permits for private improvements because they couldn't understand the difference between the private side and the, the public improvement piece. In addition, when we have a larger project, contractors are the ones that decide what parts of each, say, plan set or each project that they want to issue or apply for a permit. that they want to issue or apply for a permit. In other words, they could apply for several different permits to do one particular job. This is especially problematic for the permit counter because the permit technicians are not able to determine or keep track of whether or not that contractor has provided permits for all of the work that's required under that overall project. Same goes for the inspectors in the field. Once the permit gets issued and they're in the field, the inspectors assume that they have a permit for all of the work. Sometimes they don't realize that contractors are putting in two, three, sometimes four different permits to do one scope of work that's included in a public improvements agreement. This is an example of the contractor supplied quantities for a minor water line repair project. I apologize, this is a little bit blurry. But this is what a contractor finds when he applies for a permit, e-track it. He goes through this list, he puts in all of the quantities for his project. This particular project, the fee issued was $104. We can see that he had some curb and gutter replacement. He had a little bit of pavement work and some asphalt and concrete. So we can tell by looking at these that contractors sometimes use the same quantities for multiple projects. And the quantities themselves are not very accurate. They're difficult for the permit techs to verify these quantities. This is an example of the fee estimate that the permits tech put together. You can see this particular project had a value of $960. That's where the collateral amount comes from. But yet the fee that was collected for this was only $52. Okay, on projects that are larger, we do what we call public improvement agreement. This agreement is put together by the engineering division. It's essentially a contract that says that the developer is going to give these improvements over to the city and the city will take over that maintenance. The fee system currently works the same way. Even though the engineering division makes this estimate to determine what the the overall collateral is going to be, the permit counter still makes another cost estimate to determine the the permit fee. So our proposal for this is to utilize the estimate that we do for the public improvement collateral and use a percentage. In this case, we're recommending a percentage of 2.5% to determine what the permit fee is. Again, we hope that this is going to save time and effort on the contractor's part for not having to provide all of the material quantities. And it'll save time at the permit counter from recalculating estimates that have already been calculated by the engineering division. Okay, building permits. So this table shows the typical chart used to determine building permit fees. We currently provide or calculate fees in two different ways, primarily for larger projects, big buildings, new new homes, decks, remodeling projects, things of that nature. We use this chart. We take the valuation of the building and then we use the fee schedule on the right-hand side to determine the actual fee. Small projects like water heaters or roof replacements currently calculated using the fixed fee. This process works pretty well, except we have a very long list of fixed fee items. What we would propose to do instead is to revise this schedule. And we would revise this schedule not only to increase these fees a little bit to keep up with current costs, but we've adjusted these fees so that the higher valuations, when we get up to those hundred thousands and above, those fees are more geared towards the big buildings. And then we would like to keep the lower fees reasonable for contractors and to do it yourself for residents. In order to make sure that we're recouping our costs for our inspections, we'd like to require a minimum fee. This table shows the valuation scale on the left-hand side. Shows the current fees that are charged based on the valuation in the center. And it'll show the minimum fees that we would like to charge. $150 covers that initial issuance of the permit and the initial inspection. Once we hit a threshold of about $7,000, we get to a point where the the minimum fee is no longer controlling and the fees are then issued. In this way, we can keep all building fees in the same manner. We can treat those all equally. Entitlements, our current current process for entitlements is we calculate our entitlement cost based on unit cost per acre. Entitlements covers all of the types of projects. For example, our major site plan and plat processes. And this is a pretty common method amongst all of the municipalities in the Denver area of calculating their their fees. We do see a few municipalities that use lot size, but it's a very similar process. Entitlement fees are very difficult to to anticipate. The major site plan and plats are some of the most difficult work that we do in development services. Often, the fees that we do get do not cover the time that the staff puts into these projects. So after discussion with the planning department, staff recommends creating a tiered system for entitlement fees. What we would like to do is take the group that the sites that are from one acres to three acres together, sites that are four to five acres, group them together as well and keep our standard progressive system for all of the sites sizes beyond that. The reason that we'd like to do this is we would like to get a little bit more cost to cover small projects. Staff feels that they can review a one acre site in about the same amount of time that we could review a slightly larger site. But we know that we're not recovering our fees for for this type of work. In addition to changing that process slightly, we would like to propose extended plan review fees. All of our estimates and our timing is based on developers and applicants getting through the review period in approximately three reviews. When some applicants have difficulty addressing comments or they tend to make substantial changes to their designs during the plan review process. Currently, we have projects that are now on their ninth review. Projects that go this many reviews not only extends the timeframe out, but it really takes a lot of extra city resources and essentially prevents other applicants from getting those review. Staff recommends $1,500 for the fourth review and a fee of $2,000 for each review after. Again, our hope is that we don't have to charge these fees. But we do want to use that to encourage applicants to get through this process as efficiently as they can. We currently do not charge for floodplain reviews. Floodplain reviews are required for any development that happens within the floodplain. Sometimes the floodplain permits are simple to prepare while others take a considerable amount of time and research in order to meet FEMA requirements. Staff again recommends creating the tiered system here. We would like to charge fees based on the type of project that's coming in. Fences and right of ways are typically fairly straightforward. We do have to pull floodplain information and provide information on those to FEMA. Residential construction typically is a little bit more difficult to put together because we work with elevation certificates and some more complex documents. And commercial construction, we'd like to charge a higher fee for those because we're often looking at floodproofing and other things that require substantial amount of documentation. These are a relatively small number of permits. 2024, the city only issued 20 permits for construction that would include fences and right of way floodplain work and about 33 residential floodplain permits. We are also suggesting that we initiate a pavement degradation fee. The pavement degradation fee will allow us to recoup some cost from construction within newly or recently paved roadways. We try very, very hard to preserve our new roadways. Sometimes it's very challenging to do that with the number of projects that we have. We think this is an important fee to help us preserve that and shift some of that financial burden to those contractors that are making those cuts. Every cut that we make in the roadway has an impact on the the life of the roadway. Cities engineering regulations and construction specifications currently state that cuts are not to be allowed on streets that are overlaid within four years. With the exception for emergency repairs or when otherwise approved. The regulation then defines several factors to be considered in allowing the cut in those streets. While the intent is clear, it's difficult to achieve this in practice. Local water sanitation districts do a good job of coordinating their scheduled improvements with the city's payment program as it saves them costs. Other utility providers and emergency repairs are very difficult to coordinate. Current regulations can be improved to better meet these current challenges. PCI stands for a pavement condition index. It's a numerical rating system ranging from zero to 100 that assesses the overall condition of a pavement surface. It's a standardized way to evaluate the severity and extent of pavement distress. PCI score can be used to determine the needs for maintenance and rehabilitation. A score of 100 indicates a newly paved road, while lower scores indicate increasing levels of deterioration. Street maintenance currently uses a PCI system to prioritize the roadway maintenance projects. Different jurisdictions apply degradation fees in different ways. To keep this additional fee a little bit more simple and predictable, another tiered system is proposed. Best pavement is in tier one and is proposed to have a PCI score of 85 to 100. Pavements in this tier still require maintenance but are expected to last a little longer before major repairs needed. Pavements in tier two will be identified with a PCI score of 70 to 84. These pavements will require more maintenance, but still provide acceptable ride and quality. Those pavements in tier three that have a PCI score of 69 or below are those that are identified for maintenance in the short term. During our research on the pavement degradation fees, we looked at a number of Colorado communities, how they apply PCI ratings as well as some other very similar types of ratings. From this, we can see that nobody does it exactly the same in any community. But we've modeled the system that we're proposing after these systems that we think have worked well, that have lots of investigation and time put into those those systems. Degregation curves need to be developed and used to accurately project pavement life. The more data that the city is able to collect through the PCI evaluation, the better these estimates will become. Okay. The chart on the bottom of this slide shows the city's street repair cost currently. So we've modeled the system to charge or to set fees based on the full depth replacement of the asphalt in these areas. Cuts, alligatoring, some of the other pavement pieces that crumble and break free often require the full depth replacement from the the program. That's why we've picked these fees in our system. So we propose that tier one fees be $4 a square foot. Tier two fees be $2.50 a square foot. And we would not charge any additional pavement degradation fee for those pavements that end up in in tier three. Okay, we hope that initiating pavement degradation fee will help us keep our streets freer of the many cuts that we see. We hope that the added fees help contractors, mostly our utility providers, to look for alternative ways to put utilities in. And we're hoping that the overall result of this is going to be to extend life of our pavements and our overall maintenance costs. Okay, the next steps for implementation. We would like to follow this session up with a resolution to set new fees for all the standard fees and for some of the new fees that we are allowed by code to be able to implement. We would then follow with an ordinance to establish the new fees, like the pavement degradation fees. We would follow with an ordinance to establish, oh, I'm sorry, we'd follow with an ordinance to update the contractor registration ordinance. In addition to updating that process to the one-year rate, we'd also like to look at the licensure program. And we will follow up with an update to the floodplain ordinance. Even though the floodplain ordinance allows us to raise these fees currently, we are due for a update and we would like to include the language to make it more clear in that process. And that's all of my presentation tonight. Be happy to answer some questions.
Thank you so much for that. We'll give council a minute to think and raise hands. And I have first stop, Councilor Matt Guerrero.
Hi there, and thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I think it was this really helpful explanation of sort of how things currently work. Sounds like most of these shifts and improvements are necessary. I think my overall question is just that we get a fair amount of questions from people at like various scales of development asking about like the efficiency and timing of permits. I think you spoke to that a little bit when it came. I think you spoke to that a little bit when it came to some of the contractor-based permitting in particular. But I'm wondering if you can essentially summarize, like on average, do you think that these changes are going to help your department be more efficient in all of these realms, recognizing it's probably not the last part of the conversation around creating the most streamlined possible permitting process, but that these are of course big components of lots of scales of development?
Certainly. Primarily those portions of our permit process that require the permit text to do calculations, to take information and figure things out, those types of things are the things that slow down their process. In addition, the other big kind of pull on their time has been the insurance issue. Again, we think we have a solution to that that's really going to help us save some time. We track all of our projects, or we have started to track all of our projects so that we can give customers a better idea, as well as ourselves, how much time the permitting process is actually taking. We have an initial permit. Once you submit, that goes through a check by the permit text to make sure that everybody has all the documents that they need for the plans reviewers, for all the people that need to look at those plans to get through the system. We do that in order to help shave off some time. If somebody's missing something, we don't want comments to go out and require another review cycle, if you will, to do that. So we do that in the initial part. One of our difficulties in that part is getting all the information that's required. Sometimes permits are difficult to determine from the E-Track system exactly what's needed. The implementation of the construction waste and demolition program has definitely slowed down our permit process just because it's new. It's not difficult. We help lots of people through that process every week. But those are the types of things. If we can make things more consistent, we can make them more predictable as to what the costs are, we can improve on the system. Part of our goal for implementing some of these changes was that we would like to handle permits once in that process. Sometimes, and I would say, you know, many times, we are not able to do that because we are required to check the floodplain issues. Sometimes we have to check wind loads and things like that. So it almost necessitates the requirement for us to get it in, to take a look at it, to assess the fees, and then to send those fees back to the contractor. If we can figure out how to address some of those issues, we'll definitely be able to make that process a little bit quicker, and that's our goal. I can't promise that that will happen tonight because of this. Again, it's because of that floodplain issue mostly that everyone that comes in, we have to see, is it in the floodplain? If it is, it goes through a different review process. But we're definitely, these are steps in the right direction to shorten that process.
Great, thank you so much.
I have no other hands up, so I'll take a minute to, I don't have any specific questions, but I wanted to express thanks to the department for going through this. I mean, looking at the fees, it definitely makes sense to make sure that fees are right-sized with services so that we've got development that is carrying out the cost of financial burden and paying their own way and not taxpayers paying all the way. So thank you for that, but also doubly the fact that you guys have looked for ways to increase efficiency so that it is streamlining processes for residents, for contractors, which, you know, and the increasing of coordination, reducing the errors, a lot of things. So thank you so much for not just looking at the fees itself, but also how can we streamline the process in general. Counselor Ryan.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Thanks. I mean, it looks like you guys did a real comprehensive review of all of these, and I think that's fantastic. You know, one of the things I hear the most about, and certainly one of the things that we experience the most, right, is we'll see that a road has been repaved and then within months, one of our utility partners is cutting into it. And I know that this is a great first step on that. I wonder if maybe there ought to be even more of a bonus penalty or bonus payment if it's within certain amount of time of actually just repaving the road. So that's a question. I don't know the answer to those. I did see from your chart that some cities actually charge more than what's being proposed, and I certainly defer to you, but it just strikes me as if someone's going to cut into the streets that have been newly repaved, there ought to be perhaps even more of an incentive to get people to coordinate. And the best way I can think of incentivizing our utility partners is by charging a little more.
Certainly.
I can handle that one too. So I know that, as Keith mentioned, we also already have an ordinance in place that doesn't allow for cuts in the pavement within the first two years. So I think our intent would be is to try and enforce that to a greater degree. While there are emergency situations that we have to accommodate, the intent would be is to try and eliminate that as much as possible. And so I think we could do a better job in that regard. Anything else, Keith, on that?
Yes, I might also add that with the pavement degradation fee, we will be coming in with an adjustment to that language that's in the engineering regulations. And we want to change that because the shortfall in those regulations right now is that sometimes those standards get applied differently in different locations. So our goal is to come in and say, and essentially get the engineering standards in alignment with our maintenance program and in alignment with how we charge fees. So that extra incentive that you're talking about, that extra incentive will come from a requirement in the regulations that says, if you do cut this street, this is the type of repair that you have to replace that with. And that repair will be substantially more onerous than our current standards. If you come in that second tier, if you will, and do a cut, then there'll be a slightly different way that you're going to have to repair that street. We're no longer going to allow a three-foot-wide patch in the wheel path in a brand-new street. That's what we would come in and require and say, we want you to overlay that entire lane of traffic. If in that second tier you come in, we may allow you to go to the center of that lane. In the third tier, we'll probably allow pavement, as we've always done, pavement patching, where we allow small sections and that. But we expect those roadways to be reconstructed in a relatively short time. So that's where that extra cost comes in. You can no longer get away with a cheap patch.
I think that's helpful. I guess my last part and comment on that subject is, to the extent costs have increased and to the extent that we're looking to see that we can recover as much as we can that meets our costs and the damage that our partners are causing, whether it's an emergency or not, I would certainly be in favor of making sure that we're recouping that to the extent that we certainly can. But this is wonderful work. Thank you.
Counselor Sinks, and then Counselor Furman.
Oh, what a lot of work, huh? And I'm referring now to the staff memo and the very first part, the summary statement that says, "These fee changes are one effort by the Development Services Division." And I don't know about the Development Services Division. Was that a compilation of planners and public works? And would you speak to who's involved? Were any contractors outside people involved in that? Just a little bit more detail then about the Development Services Division, please.
Development Services is actually one of the divisions within the Public Works Department. My group takes a look at all of the engineering reviews. We take a look at all of the building plan reviews, the building inspections, and the permit counter is also included in that. We sit right next to the planners. We work with the planners every single day, just as we work with the construction inspectors and street maintenance. But we're primarily involved in the review of bigger projects, small projects. Anything that developers and outside people work on usually comes through this department for some sort of review or approval.
Great, thank you. And just one more reference to the staff memo on the second page. It, under licensure and registration, it talks, in the second paragraph in that section, it talks about testing that contractors will have to do. Is that something run by DOLA, or how will that be increased staff time? How will that testing work? Did I reference that clearly enough, or yeah, okay?
So what we'd like to do is, because our program right now is registration, for example, if somebody comes to us and says, "We want to be a contractor in Lakewood," all the requirements allow us to do is get some basic information from them and ask them, "Are you familiar with this type of work?" That's all it takes to become a contractor for certain things in Lakewood. We'd like to move that to a licensure program so that we can ensure that the people that are working here are the highest qualification that we can get, right? So we would judge that based on, say, a comparable test from another jurisdiction. Denver, for example, has their own testing program. We like that program. We like the level of knowledge that it takes to be certified under that. But we also follow the ICC guidelines, and there's many ICC tests. That's the International Code Council that regulate things like construction. And we want to make sure that we have people that are qualified to do the work that they're supposed to be doing. When it comes to the work that we do within the right-of-way, that doesn't really apply to the building codes. But there's other things that we find that the contractors we're letting into the roadways right now just do not understand very well. As a great example, it's traffic control, right? We issue traffic control permits. We have traffic control plans that are put together, but we continually find the contractors are not paying attention to that because they're not really qualified to identify those problems. We want people to be safe in the roadways. That's why we would like to increase that program to a licensure program. From a staff perspective, it takes us about the same amount of time to take a look at things we get for registration as the things we would get from licensure. So we don't expect that to be an increased load on staff.
Great, thank you.
Well, Counselor Furman, and then Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. This is obviously needed, and it's a great work, so I really appreciate it. I did have a quick question. Obviously, a lot of the fees appear like we're still pretty competitive across our peer communities. And this is one that I guess I don't necessarily know the answer to, but as we occasionally consider reduction in permitting fees as a mechanism to encourage affordable housing, I know that's been something mentioned by different people in different groups, is there ever a consideration for the baseline fees to make up for the incentivizing of fees for affordable, if you know what I mean? This is obviously based on the idea of fees across the board, but if that were ever used as a mechanism to encourage affordable or to support it, obviously, we'd need to make up for that. Is this something that's taken into consideration when you're adjusting the fees?
So in order to calculate our fees, as you mentioned, we did a couple of things. We went through, we made some detailed estimates of how many people would work on a project. We included their rate with benefits. We included inspection costs, trucks, the time that takes to drive out to a site. We put all of that stuff in there to come up with those estimates. We then compared those with our neighboring jurisdictions to make sure, not that we adjusted fees based on what they were doing, but we wanted to be competitive overall. We've recently taken a look at some things in the building permit process just to determine what those fees and things are. We're certainly open to those things as they are relative to affordable housing. And I know that Planning Department is looking at some things for that very reason. And we work closely with them. We will find a way to make those items work if we can.
Thank you. That was my main question. Appreciate it.
Counselor Isabel Cruz, and then Counselor Lo.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo everybody's gratitude for getting kind of down and dirty with how we update these fees that haven't been updated in 10 years. So thank you all for that hard work. I just had maybe two questions. One, like for the range of the like $1 to $500 projects, like how many types of permits do you have regarding that? And like what types of work would that normally like indicate?
So we seldom come across any projects that are very low in the, you know, less than $100. But we have a variety of things, and valuations come in all different things. We allow homeowners to do work. But most of the things, those types of permits, will come through the Building Department. They might be changing out some electrical fixtures, things of that nature. Any type of electrical work still needs a permit, but something like that could be in that smaller range. Anytime any new construction, those costs are probably going to be higher. But low-cost items are going to be plumbing changes, things of that nature.
Okay, that's helpful to understand because I think overall, the proposal is really reasonable. I do sort of worry for that $1 to $500 range that there could be sort of a spike in unpermitted work since that's such a significant increase in the cost that may deter folks from wanting to do things the right way. So that's just something to consider as the ordinance is being put together that I would potentially worry about the ramifications of that, that level of increase in that range. And then the second kind of question I had was just making sure that I understand the supplemental materials. Is the Board of Appeals fee new, a new proposal, or is that something that's existing?
That's an existing fee. We did not propose any rule changes to that fee.
Okay, great. Just wanted to check because I was like, that isn't in the presentation. I don't think it is. So I just wanted to check. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Lo, and Counselor Labear.
Yeah, no, thank you. Second, third, fourth, what's been said. Thanks for all the work here. I think, you know, going back and looking and trying to, you know, make these as streamlined as possible, but also reflect actual costs as a worthy cause. So thank you, Keith and Public Works team, for all the work here. Funny enough, the two things I were going to ask about are exactly the two things that the previous two counselors asked about. Counselor Cruz and I definitely did not coordinate, but I was actually going to ask about the exact same thing. That in general looks reasonable to me. I was just struck by the building permit fee slide you presented, Keith, that shows current fee versus proposed fee. I mean, I feel like the one thing I would say about all these different, the presentation is like, I understand the sort of the minimum cost argument. That is sensible and compelling. And it's also true that like for work in the total valuation of like $1 to about $3,000, just mathematically, this can be described as anywhere from like a doubling to a quintupling of the current fee. Whereas for everything above that, it's like an extremely modest adjustment. So I guess I do worry, I'm curious to get a little bit more context on why that is necessary in the context of thinking about, you know, the affordability concerns that we've heard about from so many families. I just, I mean, if we get very, very few projects at that level, I think it's less worrisome. But given the answer you just gave, Counselor Cruz, that like we do get a certain volume of these low-impact, small, low-impact projects, I mean, that could be a significant increase. So I guess I would just, I would just ask like, why are we going this approach for the building permit fees versus potentially a less dramatic increase for valuations at the like, in the $1,000, $2,000 range? And maybe offsetting that with a slightly higher increase? and maybe offsetting that with a slightly higher increase for valuations above that?
So, so that minimum fee came from what our estimate was to issue the permit and to have one inspection by a building inspector. Again, most of those types of fees like that are going to be through the Building Department. And usually, they only require one inspection. It's something to come out to check, the water heater, something of that nature. Now, most of what happens currently, remember that we have fixed fees for many of our, our, our systems, if you will. So a water heater, for example, is a little over $80, I believe, right now. So you're not going from $1 to the 150. It's really going from more of that $80 rate to 150. I agree that that's still a very large increase for a very small thing. But that was a proposal that we made to try and cover costs on, on all those permits. But if we switch, and again, that's why that actual chart could be done in a couple of different ways. We could change those fees out and just put the 150 in there. We could keep those at a, a lower rate. But we decided just to say, this is the system that we use. ICC kind of recommends this system. A lot of neighboring cities use the same system, although everybody has a little bit different fixed fee and fractional fee adjustment on that. And then we set the minimum fee on that. Part of the reason we decided on the minimum fee is because that can be adjusted. If we feel that that's too high, that's an easy thing that we can change without having to change the whole schedule. But we do have the same concern. We really want people to get inspections. We also want to try to recover some of those costs for that as well.
Just to add to follow up on that, one of the other elements that we have to take into consideration is that we have to correlate those cities' costs or those, we have to recover those expenses. Otherwise, those fees be, can become or could be viewed as a tax versus a, just a fee. So we want to be careful there and make sure that, again, we're looking at what we're charging and keeping that in line and not necessarily subsidizing or undercutting that, that cost.
I see. So it's in other words, I think, I think, Maria, that, that, that helps preempt the, the second part of that question. The reason we can't just reduce that, the proposed fee for valuations below like 2,000, but then increase it for valuations above 20,000, is that then exposes us to the argument that this is no longer a fee but a tax.
Exactly. And then, yeah, then we're essentially putting additional costs or, again, subsidizing, I guess, is the word.
Right. Well, I certainly want us to recover our costs, and I, and I'm, since I'm receptive to that argument. It just seems to me that, that, on the other hand, I am thinking about Lakewood households that, you know, maybe are doing $1,000 or $2,000 of work. And, you know, the, the difference of paying $150, you know, for, for $1,000, based on the chart Keith showed, is for a $1,000 valuation. I mean, we're looking at a difference of $43 under current fee for, versus 150 under proposed fees. I mean, that, I mean, I don't want to exaggerate how meaningful that is, but I think that certainly could be meaningful for some families. So I just wonder, that is the one thing I, I just would ask us to be thoughtful about as this gets fleshed out.
We will. We'll, we'll take another look at that and, and just make sure that our, yeah, if there's another tier maybe perhaps in there before jumping to the 150.
Or if there's anything that, that can be done, maybe for, I mean, I don't, this is probably, this might be too administratively difficult, but I want, you know, there's households that $150 is something that they're not going to bat an eye about. And then there's households where it's actually quite meaningful. So I just wonder if there's any distinction that can be made there. But maybe, maybe, I mean, but then again, we don't really have a way of means testing things that we do. So I don't, I don't know if that's realistic. And then the only other thing, I would just put a plus one behind Counselor Furman's comment that, you know, I, I would definitely be for looking at a way of waiving some of these fees wherever possible for affordable housing projects. And I know that's something that Travis and team are already looking at, but certainly, whether it's in this proposal or some future affordable housing inclusion or zoning proposal, I think that would be useful.
All right. I see. No more hands up. Oh, we've got one more. Counselor Wright.
Sorry. I, I, I do like what Counselor Cruz and, and Counselor Lo have said about the affordability. And while I understand we might not quote-unquote subsidize one versus the other, I do think there's enough subjectivity that we could adjust our rates perhaps on the, on the higher end to cover our costs more effectively and to lower the, lower the costs on the lower end or provide some ability for residents to request a waiver or request a reduced fee to go back to what we were doing. So in other words, while we wouldn't be doing the subsidize one versus the other, I do think that there is enough subjectivity that we could raise the rates on the higher end. And the net effect is that where the city is not losing too much on its costs or is still coming out, still coming out even.
You know, I did not share the entire table with you all, but there are substantial increases in those higher fees as well. I tried to, to mention that in the presentation, but I only showed you the lower tiers of that table. When we start getting into projects that start to exceed $1 million, those fees, well, the percentage isn't as high because the value is so large. Those fees do go up quite substantially. And when we bring this back, I'll make sure we include that entire table for your inspection.
Thank you. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I just, in the effort of always, you know, driving towards something close to consensus or being really clear with staff, I think, I just want to say that I'm also really aligned with this idea of both smaller projects, particularly of individual homeowners and thinking about those, those just like individual levels of development that I think colloquially and culturally aren't really thought of as development by the public, if that makes sense. But obviously, in terms of city infrastructure, they are. But also this idea of affordability, and if there's a way for us to square that and whether or not that's a conversation for this or not, I, I'm definitely very interested in that. And then lastly, I just wanted to recognize our new director. I don't know that we've actually had a lot of opportunities to interact. Ms. DeAndrea, is that, am I saying that correctly?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to say thank you for being here. Obviously, this is the first project of many. I expect that we'll get to interact with you on. I, I appreciate that you're not the person who are directing the majority of our onslaught right now, but I imagine that there will be other things for which it is. And so just wanted to point out that this is, I think, our first serious interaction with you, and welcome to the team. And I know that many have been very impressed by your leadership so far, and we're really excited to have you. And wanted to take a little point of privilege to, to say that this evening.
Thank you so much.
All right. And with that, actually, Director DeAndrea, I was going to ask you if you had anything that you wanted to say in closing before we wrap up the topic.
Yeah, just appreciate, I know this can be a very dry subject. So we appreciate very much your attentat- attentiveness tonight. We do anticipate, you know, potentially some feedback, negative feedback, potentially from property owners, contractors, developers, as we roll this out. Our intent is to hopefully have all this in place before, right around the first of the year with these various fees, and we'll be focused on communication with those various groups so that we can explain the whys behind exactly why we're doing this and, again, emphasize those, streamlining those processes so that even though there is a cost potentially increase to, for some or all these permits, there also is some, hopefully, process improvements that will reduce the overall time that it takes to get permits with the city. And just as another note, we will be coming back to you next week. Or on the agenda, just as an update, we're also going to be talking about stormwater rates. So we've looked at those, and that is on the agenda for next week, is to raise those stormwater rates. And we're going to be doing that in a two, kind of over a two-year period. And it's, again, really critical for our infrastructure, just like permit fees, how we manage the work within the, within the right-of-way to make sure that we're keeping our infrastructure as up-to-date as possible, both maintained and for any new capital projects so that we can increase capacity and, again, encourage that development within the city. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Hensel, thank you so much for your presentation tonight. And we will see you both, I'm sure, at another council meeting soon. All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and switch over to committee reports. Do I have any committee reports this evening? All right, okay. Well, seeing none, and that means no further business tonight. So I will go ahead and adjourn us, and I will adjourn this study session at, or I'm sorry, 8:16 PM. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.